...greatest statements or make brief comments during the public comment part of the meeting. However, persons in attendance are not allowed to act in an unreasonable manner that alarm or disturbs another and provokes a breach of the peace. This can include making loud, unusual noises, clapping, speaking out, or interrupting during the city council meeting. One may not be performed until official duties. If any person acts in a disorderly manner at a public meeting and persists after being warned, the mayor and the chairman can order the person to withdraw or be removed from the meeting. If the person refuses, they may be removed and fined under the state statute of disorderly conduct. Disorderly conduct at a public meeting in Illinois involves any unreasonable behavior that disturbs others or disrupts the meeting and is subject to removal and penalties if they persist after a warning. This also includes city employees as well as council members. Harvey Police Officer President Public Council meetings to assist the chairman of preserving order. If any person is ordered to withdraw or leave the meeting by the mayor and refuses, that person may be cited criminally and charged with disorderly conduct. The Harvey Police Department can escort the person out of the building. If the person refuses to leave or physically resist the Harvey Police Department, that person can also be charged with resisting arrest. Under Illinois law, resisting arrest is defined by knowingly resisting or obstructing the performance by a known to that person to be a peace officer, firefighter, or correctional institution employee of any authorized act within his or her official capacity. This constitutes a class A misdemeanor of the state statute resisting or obstructing the peace officer, firefighter, or correctional institution employee. The state statute that requires that the act of resistance must involve some physical act that imposes any obstacle that may impede, hinder, interrupt, prevent, or delay the performance of official duties. Examples include struggling, wrestling, going limp, or physically aiding a third party to avoid arrest. Illinois law explicitly states that a person is not authorized to use force to resist an arrest by a known peace officer even if that person is believed to be or is in fact unlawful, even if that arrest is believed to be or is in fact unlawful. Resisting an unlawful arrest by a known officer is违反 the state statute. People, people are orders twenty, two twenty I A. Thank you.
Good evening. This is the City of Harvey City Council meeting. Today is Monday, January twenty seventh, two thousand twenty five. The time is seven fourteen P M. We will call this thing to order and take the roll by having the present members sign themselves. We have a forum. Next, item on the agenda is invocation and pledge of allegiance. Six word. Could you be so?
Thank you, Mayor.
Please leave us. Thank you.
Very bow here, sir. Thank you, Heavenly Father, for this day. Thank you, Lord Jesus, for the Holy Spirit has been ushered into this City of Harvey City Council. Lord Jesus, we know that we do all things through Jesus Christ who strengthens us, Lord, and we're asking you for an abundance of blessings. We come to you this morning, Lord Jesus, with our cups half-empty. Some may look at those cups as half-full, but we know that, Lord, you save us here all these years, and we can do all things. And, Lord Jesus, we're looking for you to fill our cups until they run over. Lord Jesus, give us the wisdom and the knowledge that you gave King Solomon, Lord Jesus, so we can do and make the right decisions on behalf of each and every great resident here in this great city. Lord Jesus, we're not asking a whole lot, but we're, we want a whole lot. We want a whole lot for our city. You bless us in twenty-four, Lord, and we ask you for an abundance of blessings in twenty-five to continue, Lord Jesus, this great legacy. Bless each and every one of the members that's here under the sound of my voice, each and every resident that came in, even if they're not a resident. You're blessed under the sound of my voice, Lord Jesus. Don't let one fall unless the other one is there to pick them up, and this is our prayer of Jesus' name, and we ask it all. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Lord.
Next on the agenda is special announcements, as there are nine. Next is executive session, discussion of personnel and litigation matters. We have that as well. So there is no return to open sessions, so we have concluded four, five, and six on the agenda. The next item is the approval of minutes. Before we go there, give me one second, please. Sir. Sir. Thank you. Okay, we will return back to our meeting. Before we go into the approval of minutes, I do want to bring to the attention of the council and also the court's office. There was a, on the Monday, November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four meeting, there was a part of the automatic comments that specifically says all the key was recognized, all the rods was recognized, all the chap, all the items was recognized. Congress and then there was recognized, the person Smith was recognized, but then it has all the person Smith mentioned, and I will continue into a paragraph, at which point in time, after that paragraph, all the person Jewinsky was recognized. That part, all the person Smith mentioned, and as it continues, should not be in the meeting, should not be in the minutes. So no one should even have to bring that up for the simple fact, this is, it honestly should not be here. So what I would like to do, unless there are some other questions as far as the minutes are concerned, the chair would entertain the motion to approve the November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four meetings as amended with the exclusion of this section after all the person Smith was recognized. The chair would entertain the motion to approve those minutes.
Mayor, are you asking to?
Well, we're gonna, she's going to, she's going to change the, the kind, so that we make sure you know that it's as amended, and then we will ask for the motion in the second. We have a motion by the third, the second by the first. Is there any more discussion on November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four?
Yes.
Okay, chair recognizes the second word.
I'm going to amend the motion to remove the false statement made by the third world order woman, Thelaine Smith.
We just, we just removed that. We're removing that. That is what we are removing from the minutes. That's exactly. That is exactly what I just.
Could you restate?
I just restated it. I said, it says all the, are you looking at minutes? It says all the person Smith was recognized, and then it has a paragraph that says all the person Smith mentioned that quote for the record.
Mayor, would you just monitor, because most people have the same comment, is could you repeat what is being removed?
So, once again, there is a motion in the second. We are removing the part that was, that was the person that should not have been there. Okay? We're not doing this to grandstand or anything like that. We are removing it. There is a motion and a second. If there are no other questions, we are going to move forward with the vote.
I have a debate.
The chair recognizes the fourth word.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. When it comes to a situation where the minute has to be adjusted, is it possible that we can table the minutes and hold it next meeting instead of voting on something right now and not knowing that it's going to officially be changed? Because if we just automatically said this is going to be amended, we don't have that in writing to show that it's still could pass through. So if it's not, again, let's not even vote.
We're not going to question the ethics, the morality, or the truthfulness of this body. Okay, if this body decides to vote on the, the minutes as amended, then those amended, those amended meetings, minutes, excuse me, minute, meaning, minutes are passed. Okay? So there's no reason to question beyond that, just like everything else that we have.
Actually, it is because that was just a verbal statement that you made. Verbal, it's not nothing in writing. So if I'm voting on something, I want to see it in writing to show when I'm voting on, not on you saying, well, we're just going to amend it. I need to see that in writing.
We can make a, we can make a verbal amendment.
Then we'll take it and, and we won't.
And the chair has done so.
Okay.
So once again, there is a motion, and we are about to take a vote. There is a motion and a second.
Mayor, is there enough other discussion?
Is there any more? Does anybody want to call the question or not?
About question.
We have a motion to call the question. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion to call the question, a second to end debate. I'm going to change it now to call the question.
Point of parliamentary entry. May I call for a point of parliamentary entry?
Just one second. You will be recognized by the chair. Chair recognizes the second word.
Mayor, you, you led that motion to limit the debate, but the other order persons had not spoke of such until you referenced that point. And my point was to just say that the fidelity.
So once again, we're not, we're not adding anything else or debating. There is a, there is a motion to call the question. There is a motion to call the, I didn't call it. There's a motion to call the question, there is a second. There, you have a left, there's a motion to call the question, and a second that is a non-debatable motion. You can cast your vote. The motion carries. Debate is ended. Now we will take your vote on the motion to approve the November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four minutes as amended. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is the approval of minutes dated December twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. The chair will take the motion, the motion by the first and the second by the sixth. Is there any debate as far as this is a, this is a? Hearing none, you can cast your vote. Motion carries. Next item is December, is the approval of the minutes dated December sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. There's a motion by the third, a second by the sixth. Is there any debate? Hearing none, you can cast your vote. Motion carries. Next is approval of minutes dated January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. There's a motion by the first, a second by the third. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
The chair recognizes the second word.
Are the minutes going to detail the reports that were given by the department?
None, other than the fact that, that it took place, but not the detailed portions of that. And just so you know, that one person, we are working on the possibility of being able to provide those in the future, but it's something that we're not capable to do at this material point in time. Is there any other debate? Hearing none, you can cast your votes. The motion is passed. Next item on the agenda is the approval of bills, that is item number eight. The first item, the eight, is the chair will accept the motion to approve the bills dated November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four. There's a motion by the third and a second by the fifth. First of all, before we continue to the vote, is there a recommendation from the finance chair?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yes, there is a recommendation. We met at the last meeting for the bills regarding November twenty-fifth, twenty-four, December twelfth, twenty-five, January thirteenth, twenty-five. The motion is, would it be the pleasure of the council to do all three of these at the same time, since we had a meeting on all three of them at the same time? Or would it please the, the council and the, and the chair to do them one at a time?
That is the pleasure of the, of the council. It would require an unanimous vote to do so, and the last time we tried to do an omnibus, that ended up being a little bit problematic. So, but if there is.
Do one at a time.
Okay. But I think we'll be able to work that out, but maybe not at this particular point in time. So there's approval of the bills, but we will accept the recommendation from the chair for all three items.
Yes.
Thank you. So the first we have the approval of bills dated November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, that is a motion by the third, a second by the fifth. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
The chair recognizes the second.
Alderman Rogers, could you, when was there?
This is, this is for the debate.
When was the finance meeting held? I don't recall receiving any literature correspondence or to the like there of documentation statement for having a meeting.
Madam Chair, it was, I mean, Madam.
Please, please, no, first of all, please direct comments to the chair. That's number one. So please, if you want to do that, speak to the chair.
Sure, sure. It was, it was posted forty-eight hours in advance at the meeting. It was posted on the wall right outside the, uh.
You missed the round, or you missed the sound, as we were talking.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Let, let us, let's, please, please. So, one is, this isn't, this is, we are debating whether we are going to support or not support.
This is a part of my debate, because I'm trying to.
This is not debates. These are questions.
Oh, these are not on the debate.
These are questions that could have been asked, but.
I did. I didn't see, but he emailed that, like the several others that I've mentioned. So that's why my question is, was there a finance meeting held? And I don't recall there being.
Yes, there was a finance, there was a finance meeting.
Could you just confirm, what were those details sent out? Because you were, I.
The details were posted.
They weren't emailed.
For sure.
But they were.
Do you recall?
Typically emailed out.
Finance meetings are usually held the Monday, uh, that we have city council meetings. So in order for me to verify what was discussed there, I have to go through their minutes or have to look through the agenda itself just to verify what was discussed in those meetings. But we, they have had meetings since November. I believe this is the first Monday since then that they haven't had one before the city council meeting.
Um, and that's not necessary. We are not going to, once again, question the veracity of the members of this body as far as the things that they are saying, as far as the meeting was held. If there is a question as far as if and when a meeting was held, you can always entertain that with the attorney general's office if you feel to do so. However, if you say as a chairperson of the, of the finance meeting that the meeting was held, the meeting was held.
Yeah, and it, and it was emailed and posted.
So. So there we go. The chair recognizes the fifth word.
I just want the, the record to reflect that, uh, I don't know, eight being, seems like to be a typo. That's going to be December twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Am I correct?
Thank you. Yes. So we will make that correction, December twelfth, twenty twenty-four. So, once again, we are back to the November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four bills. We have a motion by the third, a second by the fifth. We have a motion by the third or second by the fifth. You may cast your votes. Motion carries. Next item is A B, December, approval of bills, December twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. Um, there was a scrappiness here. The chair will entertain the motion. There's a motion by the sixth and a second by the third, is there any debate? Hearing none, you may cast your vote. The motion carries, next item is A C, approval of bills, January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. The chair will take the motion as a motion by the sixth and a second by the third, is there any debate? Chair, it contains, recognizes the second ward.
Underneath Department one oh two Administrative Services Department, zero one one oh two five thousand, I've called this, uh, question before to you specifically, finance chair, as to why Mr. Williams, our comptroller, is, uh, using his personal credit card for purchases. This one is to Wayfair, it doesn't give a description on what was purchased from Wayfair at the cost of two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And I was just thinking it would be a conflict of interest if he's using his personal piece. Now, I brought this up back in April, uh, two thousand and twenty-four, and for two months, we no longer saw those debts on that credit card. But now I see it yet again for Wayfair, Adobe, Microsoft.
What is your debate?
The debate is, is that I, the comptroller.
Yes.
I don't believe she'll be using his personal credit card to make purchases for the city of Harvey. I think we would have a separate department or bucket or expenditure that that would come.
And that is your objection as far as whether you want to support or not support this particular motion, is that correct?
Right, this, this is regarding that.
Okay, alright, well, that is, do we know it? Now that is recognized, the, uh, we want to take another. Motion carries. Next item is denying approval of ordinance, this is resolutions for the city of Harvey, denying over business, denying meeting new business, C one. An ordinance regarding the acceptance of credit card payments. This ordinance confirms the city accepts credit cards for the payment of fees, fines, charges, and all other city obligations and amends the Harvey Code of Ordinances to impose a convenience fee or surcharge to wholly or partially offset, but not to exceed the amount of any processing fee incurred by the city up to the maximum of such charges authorized by the local government Acceptance of Credit Cards Act. Chair.
Uh, what is the point of order?
What is the point of order?
Well, if you let me say it, I mean.
What is the point of order?
On January thirteenth, did we vote on it? For, um, I've actually, on the number eight, the number C, did we vote on it?
If I'm correct, would you? Yes, we did.
Okay.
And as usual, you voted.
Thank you, thank you.
So we are now back to the ordinance, I have a motion by the first, a second by the third. Is there any debate? We've already had, uh, a hearing on this particular matter. Hearing none, you may cast your votes. Motion passed, motion carries. Thank you, next, um.
That's ordinance three five zero seven, three five zero seven.
Next we have, um, public comment. Public comment is encouraged and appreciated. This is the only opportunity for the public to address the city council on agenda items and other city-related business. In order to accomplish all business on the agenda and the, excuse me, on the agenda and the respectful of everyone's time, council members will not engage in dialogue with members of the audience, and no immediate action will be taken on a public comment issue. Please let your, when your name is whispered, when your name is called, please be prepared to, um, to speak. Please note your comments in three minutes. No speaker may donate years of her time to another speaker. Comments shall be courteous and respectful at all times. No person may use public comment for the purpose of campaign or advertisement. This is not a question and answer time, and council cannot engage in conversation with the public. Questions and concerns about operations should be addressed with the city's stance during regular business hours. Uh, Mr. Rush, would you please check the microphone and make sure that it's working properly? So, I am going to call the name of the first person and also the person to follow. So, once the first person finishes, um, the, the next person should be ready to speak, ready and prepared to speak. So the first public comment is Mr. Urban, followed by, uh, M. King Jr.
Hello, everybody, my name is Mr. Urban, uh, former trustee of the Harvey Public Library. Uh, and I have a couple concerns. I was at the war meeting for the third ward alderman on Saturday, and, uh, there was some things that she said that kind of disturbed me. Um, it was in regards to the people that live on one hundred fifty-third in Winchester, and they were complaining about the gloves and the bags that people were dropping on the ground. I, I sympathize with them, nobody should be littering, I wouldn't want it done in front of my house. But the alderman said that she was with them, and she understood, and she didn't want them to move away, and she wanted to stay in their homes and to live there, and I, I, my mind immediately went to the tingles on one hundred and fifty-third at Merdle, and them being forced out of their home, uh, and the third ward alderman voted for that to happen. They did a guerrilla sneak attack on them, nobody knew that that was the location that was picked. And the sad part about it is it doesn't even flood on that block. Then you got one hundred and fifty-second in Lexington, where there's only two homes on the block, were committed, put over there, and those people who kept their homes. That's not the way that you do business, the whole process is bad, just from beginning to end. I remember the, the one I found out about it, Merdina Coleman called me up and said she was at city hall, and that one of the employees was harassing with her to take away the agenda of those people that were getting their homes taken away from them and was escorted out of the building. Then I called up the alderman of second ward and asked her, did she know about it? And she didn't even know anything about it. What kind of, uh, 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 government would do something like that? From the top all the way down to the bottom, and anybody who's involved in the process? That's not the way that you do things, and it's still not right. Uh, you guys, you, you, you gotta be a little bit more honest and a little bit more transparent what you do. You can't do it when it's convenient for you. I sit here and I watch the things that you do to COVID, you know? All she asked was a simple question, you spend a bunch of amount of time on fighting, on giving the information that she needs, and apparently whatever it is that Miss Finn said, it wasn't right and it shouldn't have been there. And, uh, the people, they know what's going on, but it's not that everybody will be able to know what's going on. I hope that going forward for this year of twenty twenty-five, that you all take a different term in the way that you handle things. You always have been here praying and going on calling on God. When you get ready to do something bad and get COVID, why don't you start praying before you do it, okay? It might help you.
Next we have M. King Jr., followed by Chappelle Huggs.
Thank you very much, Mayor, for speaking, M. King Jr., not Reverend M. King Jr., but I understand why. Because God is not in this place the way it's supposed to be. I know that through the years, I have worked with the mayor, everyone in here. We had a rule, but we were trying to make Harvey better again. And we were trying to make it honest and open and everything else, but somewhere down the line, we lost our source. Somewhere down the line, we lost everything that was important to us, the citizens and party. We went through all of this stuff using professional, highly-trained policemen as security guards. Using the chief of police as a sergeant of arms, giving the rules for the committee. Where is the sergeant of arms? Using a budget that all the way, I've forgotten. Everybody gave those reports of what you were doing for the different departments, but you really didn't give them either. Because by state law, from what I just read recently, the treasurer's supposed to be giving information to you from what's received to her, so that the control and everything can work out, because that's the way you have accountability, and that's the way you have where the state knows what's going on. The reason you can't make reports, the reason that second ward alderman can't give information, the reason that these officers don't even realize it's about to happen pretty soon, because if you don't have money now, I guarantee you, your retirement is in trouble. I suggest that you go to another town and find a place you can have some security, because right here, there is none. We're top heavy, very top heavy in administration. But I go down a hall system, places like that, and I see burnt out places. I see an older person in the sixth ward that has one meeting in five years. What I just said, one meeting in five years. And the second ward alderman has a meeting at least twice a month, and I know the first ward alderman has a meeting, and I know the third ward alderman has a meeting. I don't know about the rest of you guys, but I do know who's doing the work. I do know who's protecting the citizens, I do know who has the heart of Harvey. And I guarantee you that one day, that Mayor Me, old or chairman, will have a say in the city. Because I'm telling you right now, we have to be honest and upright. We can't hide information about where the money is. Because all I'm telling you is, when the thing goes on, some people be moving on to a foreign township somewhere, whatever that, and be left holding back, and you officers, like I was when I was chief years ago at Fines, might find yourself in a ditch, God bless you.
Next is Chappelle Huggs, followed by Ryan Sinwelski.
Okay, so, um, I'm Chappelle Huggs. I'm a fifty-one-year resident of Harvey, also an elected official. Harvey, uh, Public Laboratory Trustee. Um, you know, it, it, it is no surprise because, I mean, this has been going on since twenty nineteen. I mean, we've been having corruption in Harvey forever. But for you to run in twenty nineteen based off of being transparent, we have not seen it yet. Um, you always throw this, well, call this person and call that person, and it's like you're trying to taunt us or make fun or whatever. You know, um, and then you say, you know, run against me or whatever. Well, twenty twenty-three, you only had one thousand two hundred and eighty votes. Okay? And, um, for the Harvey Public Laboratory, I had one thousand five hundred and twenty votes. So, I mean, that's a big difference, it seems like you didn't get those many votes that made you so successful, you believe. But, um, you can't get those people out to vote, and it's twelve thousand plus registered voters. Only three thousand people voted, if that mean. Because I believe that was only three thousand in the library, um, race, and then in the mayoral race, it was only like two thousand. So, yeah, that's nothing to brag about. Um, also, you talked about the library not doing this and not passing that. Well, we have, um, surplus. I know you guys are in a deficit, but we in a surplus for the first time. So all the people that claim to be, um, past library board trustees, what happened to the money, why y'all was in the deficit in, um, I come in the twenty twenty-three and we got a surplus of what, three million? And I hadn't been, I hadn't been on that in a year, or probably a year. So, I mean, if we can do it, why y'all can't do it? I, and you've been here five years and you still can't get out of the deficit. So, I think that's something y'all should think about, why y'all voting in the township.
Next we have Ryan Sinwelski, followed by Linus James Watson.
Good evening, uh, my name is Ryan, I'm with the Harvey Historical Society. Sometimes people will ask me, um, why I speak up about social issues in Harvey. They'll say, well, what does that have to do with history? Well, it actually has a lot to do with history. The Harvey Historical Society exists to celebrate, preserve, and restore Harvey history and community. We can't save one brick or one building, unfortunately, without the mayor and his cronies sending the police after us, taking us and harassing us. It's almost like Mayor Carter wants to demolish all valuable historic buildings. Why? Are you getting some benefit from demolishing on Mayor Carter? What are you not telling us? Do you notice something, there's a lot that we don't know? Also, it was people who made Harvey what it is, and people make Harvey what it is today. Fighting for our history means fighting to make sure Harvey has the history. If we don't all stand up to defeat this corruption, Harvey may not survive. Just this past Saturday, Linus and I were kicked out of the third ward meeting here in city hall because we asked the mayor some questions about money. He immediately got the literate and would not stop talking over me. What's really interesting is that residents in the meeting who said flattering things to the mayor and to Alderman Smith, they were allowed to speak freely, isn't that interesting? Those residents, they could ask as many questions as they wanted, they weren't yelled at, they were thrown out by armed police. Mayor Carter, why do you get so angry and so immediately when people ask about where our tax money is going? We're the bosses here, all of you politicians work for us, don't get it twisted. To make matters worse, Mayor Carter had his daughter and two fake profiles for asking on Facebook afterwards. Mayor Carter, why didn't you just have honest dialogue in public with residents? Don't tell me to come to you in pride of office, I've done that, you don't answer anything. Why should I be the reaction to throw people out of meetings or clear the room when someone asks about money? Are you doing something you're not supposed to with that money? If you're doing all those great things for Harvey that you claim, then why not open the books? Why have you hidden city finances from the public since you took office in twenty nineteen? You used to nail Mayor Carter for doing the same thing, remember that? You campaigned on boarding up empty buildings. You promised us you would sell or give them to Harvey residents in a fair and transparent process. Well, why don't you just push out another local business on Hallstead in favor of out-of-town pot dispensary? Why would you give control of city properties to another out-of-town company instead of letting Harvey residents get first priority? Why are you pushing so hard to addict seniors from their homes on Merdle even though you know the M. W. R. D. didn't get that grant money for the project? Finally, why are you running for the Dorton Township supervisor when you can't even handle being mayor of the city?
Next is Linus James Watson, followed by Vernon S. U. B. Turner.
Good evening, my name is Clarice James Watson, and I'm a resident of First Ward. I'd also like to recognize the Admiral James McGee. Um, last Monday, the life and legacy of Reverend Dr. Martin F. King Jr. was commemorated across the United States. Upon looking at the people in attendance this evening, I would venture to guess that many of us hold Dr. King of Harvard Darr. With that said, I'd like to play a clip of one of his speeches.
Maybe I could understand some of these illegal injunctions. Maybe I could understand the denial of certain basic first amendment privileges because they had committed themselves to that, over that. But somewhere I read, of the freedom of assembly, somewhere I read, of the freedom of speech, somewhere I read, of the freedom of press, somewhere I read, the greatness of America is the right to protest, my friend.
Sorry, Dr. King, we're not a doctor plan. Um, some of you may recognize that as part of Dr. King's last speech, "I've been to the mountaintop." Dr. King led multitudes of people in the fight for civil rights, and although the base of the civil rights movement in America were black people, in actuality, the resulting Civil Rights Act benefited everyone in America. Yet fifty-seven years later, I stand before you fighting for my civil rights to free speech. I am so dismayed that it is at the hands of a black man that my rights are being denied. And to the seniors who paraded, who were paraded in front, um, of everyone who attended the December sixth meeting, I want to say that I am deeply disappointed. You all were the generation that lived through Jim Crow. You all were the ones that, um, endured segregation. Some of you have, may even have marched with Dr. King and were protested locally. I just don't understand how you could condone, support, and defend Mayor Clark denying us our right to protest. And lest you forget that what we are protesting, we want financial transparency. My property tax bill went up seventy-three hundred dollars. I want you to know, I want to know how my money is being spent. I have every right to know, and I have every right to protest when that information is withheld.
Thank you. Next, we have Vernon Scoob Turner, followed by Jerlyn Harris.
Good evening, Mayor Clark, and staff, and all your official leaders. I come to speak about the, uh, your calendar. I noticed you don't have in the calendar, um, the Harvey beat should be marked in each two weeks, and the calendar should be noted for residents to know. Um, also, I'd like to know that, uh, this table up in front of me, they should have mics where they like, um, stand up and shout. I think it'd be appropriate to have a mic on their table also. Um, and I hope you have, uh, the next two weeks of February, recognize, uh, Black History Month for a moment in the minutes. That'd be nice for the community to know, for, uh, just recognize. Um, while we, um, we have to give orders that's gonna help our immigrant residents in the area because they are, I got some tremendous messages around me. I think they are the best behavior of the neighborhood, and they go through the challenges, but some of them say they haven't waited for these stuff to come through, but they been here for decades. I hope we have some kind of orders to protect them because they got children going to schools in the district, and, um, these schools all doing very good with, um, language to, to correspond to. So, I hope the city of Harvey can uplift the school districts where it can be productive for the future of Harvey. Um, also, um, I already mentioned about Dr. King and the holiday, but we gotta move forward, and that's all the thing I want to see, more than just, just dysfunction. And I give my time to the next person.
Uh, next, um, um, a couple of public comments is Jerlyn Harris, followed by Zahira Sharif.
My name is Jerlyn Harris. I was an elected official with the Harvey Public Library as a trustee, as a trustee for six years. I would like to say to the Honorable Christopher Clark and this Honorable Council, you all are doing a great job. I pray that each and every one of you leaders, aside that you would go to Psalm seventeen in First Timothy, chapter C, two, and see what characteristics you're supposed to display as a leader. Some of you are not fully there yet. This city is doing a great job from where we came from. I remember the previous, uh, uh, administration, they wouldn't even let you even say a word. This city came to ashes, and I'm so glad that I see improvement. I don't know what to do, but I'm looking forward to more improvement. I'm looking for more shops on one hundred fifty-four street, more businesses open, uh, homes rebuilt, let somebody come in here. If you didn't collect your money and put your money together to buy these houses, there's somebody else got the money, let them build, build Harvey, build it up, build it up. Go look at Emma. That's a report that all city governments have to report to. Contact your controller office in Springfield. They have reports. You can read the reports and see what everyone is doing with the monies that they get. This grandstanding, I'm sick of it. I'm sick of it. We people are colored, all colors, and then you wanna, you wanna fight instead of cooperate. Go read seventy-two Psalms and see do you deflect what a leader is in First Timothy, chapter two. See what the Lord say. Have a good day. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor.
Next, we have, um, Zahira Sharif.
Good evening. I'm gonna be fair to brief. Um, let me just say that I've been here for forty-eight years, and of those forty-eight years, I've been to four administrations, three of whom I was old enough to vote in. I was born in the fifth ward. I bought my first home in the second ward, and I've got my family home in the third ward, and I still have my home in the second ward. But I want to say this, all of you, the council and Mayor Clark, I'm happy. I'm happy with all of this. My mother and I prayed to have somebody, send somebody to be good for the city of Harvey after we had sixteen years of a little dictatorship, okay? All right, second of all, I could have left Harvey a long time, but when I left the military, when I, 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 um, served the military my time, I got, I could have went anywhere else if I decided to come back here because I'm true to this, and I'm not leaving until Allah says it's time for me to go. So, I, I thank all of you for doing what you do, to stick together and make this town great. When it's time to make America great, you know, make Harvey great again, and I'm done.
And the next public comment. Next on the agenda is the all coming. I promise I would not be long. Um, the only thing that I really wanna make sure of is that the citizens understand that we are trying to do some things a little bit differently, um, this year. As we always say, um, we are not where we want to be, but we're not where we're used to be. So, we're gonna continue to try to get better with everything that we do. Our next meeting, um, which is the first meeting in, in February, will be a meeting once again where our department heads and, uh, staff and all the residents and myself will give presentations to, uh, inform the community as to what we are doing, um, in our day-to-day. So, I look forward to those meetings, uh, to that meeting, and I look forward to, uh, seeing those reports and seeing how much they have gotten better since the last time, which I thought they were pretty good at that point in time as well. Uh, but we wanna make sure that we are trying to get more transparency here. For those of you, uh, who are not aware, we do, uh, a newsletter, and the newsletter goes out in the mail. If you don't get the newsletter in the mail, you can always come to City of Harvey, uh, City Hall, big one up. We also send down a notice in your water bill allowing you to know what is going on in our council meetings. One thing for sure, that I found out this, um, this weekend, uh, in the third ward council meeting, I mean, third ward meeting, which I'd like to thank all the residents who came out to the third ward, the third ward residents who came out to the meeting, um, and expressed their concerns, and they did have some nice things to say, too, and I appreciate it. Uh, but one thing I realized was that some of our residents don't get water bills. And, yeah, and so see it look in your face, uh, Sherlyn. Uh, those especially who live in, um, the, um, like senior living facilities and things like that, they don't pay the water bill, so they don't get the water bill. So, we are going to start making those, uh, copies of the insert that we put in the water bill, also available in the lobby of City Hall as well. Um, so that's another way of, uh, force the, provide a bit of transparency also. Um, and then, uh, for those who have internet access, whether it's by your phones, your computers, your tablets, you can always go on the City of Harvey YouTube page and see our wonderful, um, video, um, newsletter that has now been put together by our, by our communication team. So, that is, uh, something else you can do for transparency. Um, and then, of course, once again, what we will have, we had our next meeting, uh, our first meeting in February, where the staff will give their reports, um, to let everybody know what's going on. Unfortunately, while we're trying to be as, as transparent as we possibly can, I'm sorry. I can't take everybody in the room with me when I go into meetings, and I can't take everybody to the meetings that I have with other people. Uh, I wish they could, but that's one of the reasons why we do a lot of people. At this particular point in time, you know, I'm that guy. Um, and so, I can't necessarily take you into those meetings with me, but one thing that I can say is that when I go into those meetings, I will make sure that I'm doing everything that I possibly can to advocate on your behalf to make sure that your issues are addressed. Your voices have been heard. That is one of the reasons why we have so much production going on in the city at this particular point in time. That is why the people who sit over here to my right, um, your left, have so much work to do, um, throughout our city. We are having a homeowner's seminar, uh, that's still rated, is that correct?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, as of retirement.
From ten to twelve.
From ten to twelve, February eighth, we will be having a homeowner's seminar. We are trying to do just those things, trying to make sure that, um, uh, we are encouraging homeowners just in the city. We are also trying to educate our residents, uh, on how to have relationships and financial relationships specifically, so that when they decide that they want to purchase a home, they can have the ability to do so. Uh, prior, after that, sometime, I can't necessarily tell you exactly when, because we are still putting it together. We will also have a developers seminar. So, for all of those who are interested in buying homes or purchasing homes in the city of Harvey and rehabilitating those homes, because there's been a lot of requests for that, for those who are interested in doing so, that have the financial capability to do so, we are having, we will be having, uh, developers forum to entertain that and explain to people what it is they need to do as well. Once again, the city of Harvey is moving forward, and, uh, and just like I said last year, I'm still ecstatic about what we are doing together. So, thank you very much. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the motion to adjourn. I have a motion from the second, a second from the third, all the favorites signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing aye, we stand adjourned at eight oh three PM. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a wonderful week and be blessed.